Second, once again, I'm Madame Faiza, the Assistant Year Head for P3 and P4. Today, I'll be the one presenting the sharing. Together with me, we have Mr. Chen and also my fellow KPs and year head team. Alright, parents, before I start my presentation, I would like to go through some housekeeping matters. Alright, first and foremost, the slides will be uploaded on our school website. And the video recording for this session will also be uploaded on the school's YouTube site. Parents, I hope that you'll give us few days, three to four days for all this to be uploaded in the site, yeah? Alright, parents, feel free to type in your questions under the Q and A tab at the bottom of your Zoom screen. My team here will assist to answer your concerns and so your queries, yeah? However, at the end of the Q and, at the end of the sharing, we do have Q and A session. So if there's any unanswered questions, I'll be taking the questions live, Mr. Chen will also take the questions live, yeah? So without further ado, I will start the session. So parents, this is the agenda for today. I'll be covering what is subject-based bending. However, I will also touch a little bit on what is full subject-based bending. I think this year, you have heard a lot about full subject-based bending because next year, secondary school will be rolling this out, yeah? So for parents, if you have a child in primary six, you may have heard Mr. Chen talking about this in, probably in May, regards to the full subject-based bending. However, parents, my people, parents, you will also be hearing this in our town hall session when your child is in primary six, yeah? Alright, um, next, I'll also be talking about the rationale of subject-based bending. This rationale is more of a national rationale. So we abide by the MOE rationale when we are doing our subject-based bending. However, parents, at Merit Primary School, we also have a little slightly different approach when we do our subject-based bending. Later, I'll be sharing with you more on our policy on subject-based bending. Okay, at the end, you'll see the process of how this subject-based bending works in Merit Primary School. Yeah. Alright, parents, so in this slide, actually, you can see the difference between what is subject-based bending and also full subject-based bending, yeah? You can see that full subject-based bending, we should, we call it FSBB, is actually part of MOE's ongoing effort to nurture the joy of learning and develop multiple pathways to cater to the different strengths and interests of our students. As we know that now, different students have different profile and their ability to learn also be different. So in 2020, MO actually piloted with only 28 secondary school. However, starting next year, all secondary school will be, we're having a full-based subject-based bending, yeah? So if you see here, the difference that subject-based bending is for P4 to P5, whereby full subject-based bending is from PSLA to secondary school. So what is the difference? So you can see the second point there, alright? Subject-based bending is more to provide options for students to take on combination of standard and foundation subjects. I will explain more to you in further detail in my slides later on. However, for the full subject-based bending, alright? Actually, MO wanted to give greater flexibility for students to take more subject at different levels, the difficulty level of the different subjects. Actually, this to suit their interest and also their attitude or learning needs, yeah? So starting next year, there will be no longer a separate express, normal academic or normal technical streams. So this is the difference, generally, the summary of the differences between subject-based bending and also full-based subject-based bending, yeah? In this slide, I actually have, sorry, in this slide, actually, if parents, you want to know more about the full subject-based bending, I've also put in the code code and the link. You may, you know, go to the site and to find out more on full-based subject-based bending, yeah? This next slide will also show you the pathways that the children will take on in the later part of secondary school and so to the tertiary level. So now I go on to what is subject-based bending at primary school level, especially at P4 to P5? If you are familiar with the education system previously, I think you have known that, you know, we use the streams to them based on EM1, EM2, EM3. For my time, that class wasn't EM1, EM2, EM3. It was monolingual and extended by children. You know, the students who need more support will actually go on to primary eight, yeah? So now you can see they are evolving, there are changes in the education system. So right now, why is there changes in the bending system, in the system? Okay, previously, when they are doing EM1, EM2 and EM3 stream, children were not given an individualized attention or customization based on their ability. That means to take up a different level of the subjects, okay? Some students may do better in, for example, English and Math, or they can even do better in their languages instead of the Math and Science. So the new subject, the subject-based bending will allow children to take on different combination. Let me, for example, if a child is good in their languages, okay, they may even take up high mother tongue or even, you know, English language and so extended subjects. But however, if the child needs support in terms of their mathematics and science, they may, you know, be considered to take foundation subjects. I will emphasize on our school policy because we may take a slight approach in this, in this matter, yeah? Okay.
Hi, good afternoon, parents. This is Mr. Chen, principal speaking. I understand there are some questions here about the presentation, whether you can see on the main screen. Can I just do a very quick chat? You all can also answer inside the Q and A. Are you able to see our slide? Because on our end, we can see the slide. Can see, okay. I'm not sure for, for parents who are not able to see, is it because you are using, let's say, your handphone? Because if you are using a handphone, I'm not too sure whether it's compatible in that sense. Because I can see from the Q and A that some parents say that you can see, while some parents say that you cannot see. On our end, the slide is up and we can actually see the slide. So parents who are using a phone may want to actually check. Okay, the slide is at the corner while the speaker is on the main screen, I see. Okay, let's try and resolve this technical issue first, huh? Okay, thank you very much. I think from one of our parents here saying using smartphone can see, you need to double-click the slide to let it become the main screen instead. So maybe if I could trouble parents to double-click on the, yeah, double-click on the PowerPoint window, then that will become your main screen and you can see it versus seeing Madame Hiza as being the, the main, the main person. Can, can we do that? Thank you so much, alright? So we will continue on the presentation, thank you. So just double-click on the PowerPoint window and you will see that as being the main screen. You'll become bigger, thank you.
Okay, thanks, okay. Sorry, parents, thank you for your patience, yeah? Alright, parents, I will just continue from where I stopped just now. I was giving example, if a child excels in their English and mother tongue but needs support in the Math and Science, you know, we may recommend the child to take the first two subjects at the standard level, whereby, you know, the others at the foundational level. However, in our school, we actually very generous about this. We wanted our students to take all standard subjects, okay? You want to make sure that, you know, our children are supported in their fundamental understanding of the subject. So we'll be giving the right kind of support to these students, alright, parents? So this subject-based bending would definitely allow the students to focus and stretch their potential in the subject that they are very strong in, while establishing the fundamentals in the subject that they need support in, yeah? So don't worry, parents. Alright, parents, as was preparing this presentation, I came across this which actually resonated with me very much. It's about, you know, a child is like a butterfly in the wind. Some can fly higher than others, but each child flies the best they can. When compared one against the other, each one is different, each one is special and each one is beautiful. To me, every child is very unique, so we want to support them in any way we can. So parents, like I mentioned just now, children, they learn in different place. You know, some may be struggling right now, actually at P3 and P4 level, you can see that students are struggling. Some of P3 pupils, because of transition from P2 to P3, they are actually struggling. They do check if their teachers telling them they are facing some challenges. So I do see that in our P4 students. So I hope that this subject-based bending will really help them to pace themselves well and to be able to take the subject at their, you know, ability, yeah? Alright, this is the national framework, what is the rationale of subject-based bending, yeah? So parents, the refinement as compared to the past streaming, like just now I mentioned, the EM1, EM2 and EM3 is better because we realized that actually the EM1, EM2 and EM3 stream is actually a blunt instrument. There were a lot of issues and questions raised because, like I mentioned just now, it doesn't really allow the child to take the subject at their level, you know, their ability level. So now with this subject-based bending, yeah? Each child, depending on their performance of each subject, we will be able to decide whether they will take that subject at the standard or foundational level. We will also look at the child's overall performance throughout the year, not just at the end of the year results. In Emery, we look beyond just exam results. To us, exam result is just an indicator. We look into the child's overall learning attitude and attitude. If you remember during the COVID situation, we had one year where the child doesn't have end of the year examination. But in Emery, we can still go on with what we believe in. We have our, this policy and we look beyond the exam results. So parents, let me share in detail what is Emery Primary School, a subject-based bending policy, yeah? Because we wanted to cater to their different abilities of the children and realize their potential and their strengths. So our ADPS policy on subject-based bending, alright? In Emery, in school, at school-level decision, we decide whether the child can take standard subjects at a cut-off mark of 20 and above roughly, okay? However, if the child falls into this cut-off mark, we straight, without doubt, will channel them to standard subjects. However, if the child scored below 20 marks, alright? Parents do not worry because that's when the year hits, the IP hits and the teacher will discuss as to whether the child should be taking foundation or standard subjects. We wanted to allow the children to actually take standard subject at P5 level. I will give you the reason why much later, okay? Because we do have cases where we actually offered standard subjects to children who scored below 20 marks. This because after we have, we review it, we talk to the teachers, we, you know, understand the child better. So we actually offered and recommended child to take standard subject at P5 level. Then, at the end of P5, if we think that the child needs support and it's better for the child to take foundation subject, then we offer the child a foundation subject at that point, at, at, at the end of P5, at the end of P5. So parents do not worry because in Emery, alright? We believe that, you know, every child should be given the opportunity, you know, to progress and stretch their ability. Okay, we will always try to offer our student standard subject as far as possible. Okay, unless, like I mentioned just now, teachers have assessed and believe the child cannot cope with the standard subject and that their score which is below 20 marks, it is better for them to take foundation subject at the beginning of P5, right, parents? So for your information, information, parents, the children progress will be monitored very closely and be reviewed at the end of P5. Although there are cases where we offer the child a foundation subject in only at P6 level, alright? So why, why are, why are we pushing the students to take standard subject as much as possible? These are the three points there, actually summarize why, you know, we believe in this policy and we still continue. Even though there's a change of management, a change of principle, Mr. Chen, you believe that we should still continue with this policy, yeah? So why, standard subject offers a better achievement score in comparison to foundation subject at PSLA level? Because at PSLA level, the foundation subject best achievement score is only AL6 and, you know, and AL7. We know that AL8 is actually a failure mark. So if the child achieve AL8, you know, they may, you know, it's considered that they actually fail. So because of that, we wanted the child who is capable, you know, to achieve a better AL score to take the standard subject, right? Like I mentioned, better achievements score will translate to wider range of school choices. Why? Because the total AS score will determine which school choices, you know, they can go to. Every secondary school will have a cut-off point. So if a better total AS score, they will have better range of schools, secondary school choices, yep? And the last point here in this slide, it mentions that standard subject align better to the rigor of subject offered at secondary school. What does it mean? Okay, because if the student is in the standard subjects, okay? Standard subjects cover wider range of topics, particularly mathematics, cover a wider range of topics. It will allow the child to connect better with the secondary school subjects, yeah? If they were to take a foundation subject, alright? The coverage is much more narrower, lesser. Then when they go to secondary school, there will be kept that they need to bridge, you know, to, to catch up with what the, what the rest have learned. So as much as we can, parents, we want to keep our children at standard subject for better coping of the rigor of the secondary school subject, yeah? Um, like I've mentioned, yeah? Okay, like I mentioned just now, if our students are unable to cope with the demand of the standard subject in spite of the support rendered, we recommend them to take foundation subject, okay? By offering subject at foundational level, this may help these students to focus more on putting up their strong fundamentals and better prepare them for progression to secondary school. Okay, now sharing with you, what is the implication of choosing foundation over standard subjects, yeah? Like I mentioned just now, the children may not be able to assess the subject at secondary school level, at a higher level, yeah? Whereby, you know, the children may find that there's a lot of gaps that they need to bridge. So in Emery, like I mentioned just now, we hope that as far as possible, we want to push them to standard subjects. But then, there are cases when the children are at risk of getting an AL8, which means a risk of a failure, then we can recommend them to take foundation level. Because we also do not want them, you know, to not be able to cope and then not be able to attain AL8 because we all know that, you know, if they do not score a better AL range for mathematics, which is an AL7 at least, then they may have a, you know, they may have to repeat. So that's where if we see that this children is at risk of getting an AL8, we would recommend them even at a P5 level. So like I mentioned just now also, the implication is that foundation subjects limit the choices at secondary school level, yeah? So this what I mentioned just now, but the achievement level. In the children PSLA results list for foundation subjects, they will only be indicated a grade of A, B or C. However, okay, we'd like to explain that, you know, this will actually translate, like for example, a grade A translates to a subject AL score of a six. And for a B grade, actually translates to the AS score of seven. So children, even standard or foundation, they need to aim at least AL7 to pass. So like I mentioned again, as long as the child is not in danger of getting an AL8, we will keep them in standard, yeah? Alright. Alright, just I mentioned that for children who has the ability, you know, to be stretched, high mother tongue is another subject that probably they would, you know, consider. You know that high mother tongue is for pupils, for people who demonstrate interest in learning the subject and have the capability to manage mother tongue language at a higher level. These people will be taking five subjects in PSLA, that means an additional subject at PSLA level. However, I want to emphasize that, parents, high mother tongue score is not added in the AL, the total AS score in PSLA, right? So do not worry, because I understand parents are a bit worried. Some of them have actually misconception that if high mother tongue score will also be total up together with the total AS score in, AL score in PSLA, yeah? If you can see here, we actually have a case of 70 marks and above. This is the benchmark that we measure against, you know, of our students to take high mother tongue. But we do have required from parents, you know, they wanted the child to take high mother tongue even though the mark is below 70. We welcome that because, you know, we want the child to try, you know, they can try at P5 level and they find that they are not able to cope. You know, they may, you know, talk to the mother teacher and, you know, they may drop high mother tongue. But we do encourage, you know, the, you know, the children to continue to P6, you know, as long as they can achieve at least a 30 marks for their high mother tongue. Because this will actually help them in their secondary school, yeah? Okay, what is the advantage of taking high mother tongue in primary school? Yeah, I'm sure your parents want to know that, right? Because high mother tongue, I know that is additional subject. Some students, they compare to their friends who doesn't take high mother tongue. You mentioned that, oh, they have more free time, you know, they would have more time to focus on other subjects. But there are a lot of advantages of taking high mother tongue in primary school. I will not talk about the academic part first. Let me talk about what are other things that, you know, of thing to, the other features of taking high mother tongue. First and foremost, about building strong foundation in their mother tongue language. When they are taking high mother tongue, children will be exposed to literature and also exposed to activities that is pertaining to culture. So with all this exposure, children learn more about the value system and the culture of their mother tongue. In turn, it will instill critical thinking on our children. There are also actually research saying that, you know, if the children are bilingual, they are very strong in both languages, it would actually help them in their intellectual capacity. So I really believe in that because there are also research on this, yeah? Like the second bullet point about testing the bridge of mother tongue language in secondary school. We believe that if the child take high mother tongue in primary school, it will actually strengthen their fundamental in mother tongue and help them in secondary school. Means that in secondary school, they can allocate more time to strengthen their learning in other subjects. They find it is a bit easier in secondary school, you know, in learning their mother tongue. I would like to affirm this because this what happened to my own child. He's not good in his, in his Math and Science, but he's actually good in Language. So I would say that, you know, when he's in secondary school, he doesn't have to put in so much effort in his mother tongue, but focus on his mathematics and his other subjects. You know, you know that in secondary school, they have to take on more subjects than even seven subjects. So this will actually help them to cope better, yeah? So the, and devote their time on other subjects is offered in secondary school. So the last bullet point about the future of the world. I mentioned here about Asian countries like China, Indonesia and India. I think we have heard our Singapore leaders talking about how Asian is the up and coming market. It's a very big country, they are all big countries, big power giant and they are actually controlling some, the market in around the world. So with the big Asian countries developing, our children with the empty capability will definitely open up opportunity for them in the future. So I hope that parents, you know, this could be one of the consideration, why, you know, you allow your child to try high mother tongue at P5, P6 level. Alright, next will be more about the academic, like, okay, parents will think that advantage of taking high mother tongue in primary school will give them more priority in admission to SAP. What is SAP? SAP is a Special Assistant Plan Schools. Generally, SAP schools put a very high consideration for Chinese language. So in terms of high Chinese, if you, the child take high Chinese in primary school, it will give them an age permission to SAP schools. Not just about using their, not just using their PSLA results, they, so they also can consider using DSA to give them an entry to these SAP schools, alright? As for MLAP and TLP, the Malay Language Elective Program and TLEP is Tamil Language Elective Program. Now, now we have schools that open up mother tongue languages as one of their DSA options. So we also have students who actually have been applying for this program in the schools that offer it for DSA, yep? So like I mentioned, it's not just through PSLA results, they can consider going to these schools using their DSA, yeah? So taking high mother tongue in secondary school. I mentioned that not required to do mother tongue in GCSE. So if they are taking high mother tongue in primary school, some students may want to follow up and take high mother tongue in secondary school. This give them an advantage, advantage if they want to pursue their study in junior college. Because, you know, if you take high mother tongue in secondary school, you do not have take mother tongue in GCSE. This will in turn free up their time for other subjects. But I do have parents who mentioned that if I want my child to take high mother tongue in primary school, but do not want to take high mother tongue in secondary school because they want to focus on other subject instead. But I think that sometimes when we are freeing up time for other things, they will not translate to the outcome that we want. Yes, you want them to focus on other subject, we may not see the outcome that you want. It means that you think, oh, okay, I can do better in these subjects if I, I just take the normal standard Malay or mother tongue, but it will not be translating to what they actually want to achieve, yeah? Because some of these children actually better in their languages instead of the subjects, you know, like mentioned the math or even science, yeah? So the other point is about deficient students with AS score for entry into SAP schools. My next slide will show you what it means, you know, high mother tongue in Chinese as tiebreaker for SAP schools, yeah? You can see that in this slide, okay? You can see the total AS score for these children. For example, first they are ranked seven and eight. And you can see those children who have the total AS score of eight, okay, actually ranked based on their higher mother tongue, higher Chinese. So you can see the second child, actually, the AS score is eight, but he got distinction in high mother tongue. So their performance in high mother tongue will give them the, a better ranking, you know, priority placing when they want to be posted to these SAP schools, okay? So I could that, you know, this will give you a better, better understanding if your, if you wish your child, you know, to, to consider your child to go to the SAP schools, yeah? So you can see every school have their own cut-off point. So, you know, for one, maybe the SAP schools had a cut-off point of eight, for example. But then you can see that at eight, we have one, two, three, four, four students. But then the children with the distinction in high mother tongue is ranked higher, much higher than the child who is not taking high mother tongue. So this give them an advantage, yeah? So this further explain about SAP schools, which caters to academically strong students who excel both in the mother tongue as well as English. SAP schools only cater to those studying Mandarin as their mother tongue. So that's why just I mentioned about more of the high Chinese. However, parents, for Malay language students and Tamil students, do not worry. There's also a two-year program in some selected secondary school that caters to the children who has the ability in pursuing much higher level in their mother tongue, yeah? So if they are keen in the language and they have the aptitude of learning, they may want to consider this MLAP and TLP program in some of the schools that I'll be sharing in the much later slides. Yeah, alright, so here is the list of the schools, yeah? For SAP schools, there are actually about 15 SAP schools, so I do not listed everything down. But what I've listed down is more of the popular schools that our child, our children actually opt for, yeah? For example, the Malay Language Elective Program. We can see that from our school, we have children applying to Anderson Secondary School. I think because it's much nearer, you know, to where Uh I think because it's much nearer, uh you know, to where they are staying. Uh get Panjja Government High is in the west area, but I think these two are the most popular choices that our children normally will choose. As for the T L, T L E P, the one nearer to us is the Riverside, definitely Riverside Secondary School. But we do have children who go to Asian Secondary School, so these two options are the most uh popular options by our children. I will not say about Commonwealth, Commonwealth is is actually in the uh west and you know, for M L P, Tanjikato is actually in the east area lah, yeah? So so these are the list of uh schools, the S A P schools parents, if you uh want to know the list, okay, it is available in the M V website, yeah? So, parents, based on what I've mentioned just now, I'm gonna share with you how does subject-based bending work? Just how we have already mentioned to you about our policy, and this is how it works, yeah? Parents, at the end of the year, the children will sit for the school-based examination. Um. Based on the performance at the end of the year, it's not just their result, but overall performance and their progress throughout the year. Then we actually recommend them a subject combination based on their results. Parents, I will show you later a form that you receive at the end of the year, okay, after the children have sat for their exams. Um as mentioned, it will try to recommend all students to take subject, standard subjects. Because uh we believe that you want to push our students as much as stretch out students as much as possible, yeah? So at P five, at P four to P five, um it's the parent option. Parents will exercise this option, we will recommend, but you exercise the option. If you opt for your child to take foundation subjects, not what the school recommend. Then the school will contact you, the teachers even near your hips. Will actually contact you to understand better why you make the decision, why you not want your child to take, you know, the standard subject. Um because we want to understand better, we have to have conversation with you. Probably, you know, uh there are certain things that we do not know, and you you know the child better, okay? Uh we also have children who qualify for high mother tongue, and probably you do not wish for them to take high mother tongue. Then the teachers will also contact you to have conversation with you on your decision. You want to understand your concern, why you not want the child to take high mother tongue. So far, I think after the phone call, generally, you know, most parents took up their accommodation by the school. Uh because at P four to P five, you want the child to try at least at P five level, yeah? Um then, at P five level, um the school will have a review that mentioned just now. Then the school will have the final say to any changes to the bending. Um this is a national policy, yeah, but at P five level, the school will have the right to make the decision. Because at P four level, we give the right, the uh the parents uh not to exercise the option. However, parents not worry, uh we will still consult you on this matter. Um because you, on our part, we will try our best to safeguard our children's interest and well-being. Um and try to con- convince you, if you find that um your decision is not the best interest of our children. However, definitely, you know, uh you do not want you to go away uncomfortable, so that's why uh we will try our best. Uh to convince you on our decision and to have conversation with you, yeah? Ah, all right, parents, we still have cases where, cases whereby the child at P five, at the end of P five, did not perform well. But we still give give them a chance uh until P six, three months. In P six, to hard to achieve the score of above twenty, because I mentioned, if the score is below twenty, they will actually. Uh uh get an A L eight, which is a failure grade. If they are still at the risk of getting getting A L eight, then we may drop them or even recommend them to foundation subject. So parents, do not worry, we are actually very generous in, you know, in this uh area, be because we want our children, like I mentioned. Uh to be stretched further so that they can perform better in secondary school. So parents, um that is the overall process of subject-based spending, yeah? Uh we hope that you understand where we are coming from and why we are having this kind of policy, because we don't want you to compare with other schools. Because other schools may have a different slightly approach uh with the way uh we have our subject-based betting in Admiralty, yeah? So parents, um. Okay, this is the option form that you may receive at the end of uh the year before the school ends. Uh this form is very important whereby you will exercise your decision, yeah? You can see a four S, one H, four S means four standard subject and one high mother tongue. Okay, so the school were actually indicated what is the recommendation? And whether you agree with it, you will have to, you know, uh indicate and tick in the boxes that uh is available there. Like I mentioned just now, if you find that uh the decision doesn't align, then we may have, we may have to contact you. And have conversation with you, yeah? We also have a statement here that, you know, any subsequent change of subject combination will be based solely on your child's performance. At the end of P five and the school's recommendation, yeah, parents? So uh please look forward for this option form at the end of the year. So if you have any concern regards to the recommendation that we have given. Uh feel free to call the form teachers or the mother tongue teachers if you want to know more about the high mother tongue. Oh yeah, I just want to indicate uh uh talk about a bit of high mother tongue. I think parents may want to know, yeah, high mother tongue, uh how long, you know, that my child will have to, you know, uh how how many additional periods? That my child will have to take, okay, is after school, it's one and a half hour, okay? Uh so if the child is taking, normally uh in M R T is on every Thursday, okay, every Thursday. Uh so after school, the child will stay, you know, for one and a half hours to continue their learning, uh their high mother tongue learning, yeah? So there's a point I just want to mention because I just I didn't mention about it, so I think this may be one of the questions that parents may ask. Yeah, so parents, um that's the overall process of our subject-based vending and M R T, yeah? Um I'll show you this, uh that's the end for my presentation, so now is the Q and A session. So if you have any questions, so feel free, uh thank you Mr. Chen, and me will take your your questions, like. Okay, let me see if there's any questions, yeah? Uh so far, there's no question, Mr. Chen, maybe would you like to say some words?
Uh parents, uh thank you so much for joining us, I think it's very heartening. Uh to to see a number of parents that we always have been being interested and involved in your child's education. Working with us very closely or making such decisions. I think just now when you were listening to Madame uh Faiza talk about, you know, the 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 way we do subject-based spending in the school. But you probably also could feel and could hear a lot of times that she mentioned about this consultation between the school and parents, I think that is extremely important. Because at the school level, we would see how your child is performing in the classroom on a day-to-day basis. At home, you are able to also share with us what your own observations are, and I think when we come together, we come to that kind of agreement, I think that is. Uh the best way that we can make the decision for our children moving forward. Okay, of course, then the last bit is we cannot forget that conversation that we're having with our children as well, right? They need to have a very big say in this because it is after all their own education. Um before we answer, we start answering the questions, maybe if I could so then just add on is this. At M O T Primary, you also notice by now, I think we have very high expectations of our children, and rightly so. Because I think the beliefs of our children are also very strong. We do feel that our children can do it, right? It's a matter of sometimes just the time, the effort, as well as uh perhaps their dispositions or their or their dispositions. Uh sorry, dispositions as well as their flair for different subjects at that point in time, okay? But we are very, very cognizant, we are very aware that this actually changes with time. And we want to give the children the time, we want to give them the kind of support, so we don't want to write them off so early on. At the end of P four, where we recommend, usually we recommend both our children to do standard subjects. It may be quite different in terms of the angle and the policy that different schools may have. But at M O T Primary, that is our belief, and actually, if you look at the way that we have been doing this policy for many years. It has served our children very well. I think a lot of children come back, a lot of parents have also shared with us, because we don't write off the children. They go on to P six and then subsequently in secondary one, with that strong belief, for example, in mathematics. Uh they develop that that love as well as the ability in mathematics competencies later on. And they are thankful that, you know, if they won so-called job to foundation so early at the end of P four. Okay, so same 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 that goes with higher mother tongue, so we do want to offer most of our children higher mother tongue, learn the subject. Enjoy the subject, I think that is the most important thing at this stage, okay? Okay, I think we have the first question in, why the child is already struggling at the mid-year as the review is end of P five, okay? Um let's have it, let's have that conversation, I think the well-being of the child is indeed very, very important. We will then have a conversation with parents, and we feel that at that point in time, uh the the well-being of the child is at stake. Right? And the performance of the child is also not very good. And we are also at the schools and seeing that basically based on the data that we have, through the daily performance. Through the weighted assessments, show that the child is really not able to cope at a standard subject. Yes, I think we can have that conversation with parents and make a decision, do we want to change the child to foundation? Uh and in an e- example again, is in math, and you realize in a while why I keep talking about that. Uh to say whether do we want to actually change to foundation math instead? So that a child develops a certain confidence that, you know, I won't be forced to keep on struggling through standard math when I really just cannot cope. Okay, but if the assessment is that, the evaluation is that the child has not been putting in the hard work. And hence cannot show that kind of results, then I think the conversation is also quite different. We want to help the child realize that, look, with the right discipline, with the right focus and your hard work, I think you can do it. Uh then we don't want to let the child go off so easily to think that, you know, I just have to tell parents that I don't want to do this, and then we will drop to uh foundation. Let me just share why is it that I keep using methods as an example? You realize if you take a look at the P S L E grading uh for the achievement levels. There are two subjects in Singapore especially that we focus on very, very strong, English as well as math. Our children cannot get A L eight for English or math. Uh if they wish to pass P S L E and move on to secondary school. Because if they get A L eight for either English or math, they will uh have to repeat P S L E. Because it's considered as being they have failed P S L E, so that's why the focus on these two subjects. And based on the data that we have been having, not just in M O T Primary, but actually school uh nationwide. Is that generally students have a bit more of difficulty struggling with the math curriculum, get clearing the A L eight. As compared to English curriculum, okay? Um at in Singapore, yes, indeed, our math curriculum level is pitched at a at a good standard. And that's why I think nationally we are known, internationally we are known, that we are able to help all our children reach a certain. Uh level of in terms of numeracy, because that allows us to be able to uh actually assess many different types of curriculum from there. Science at the secondary level, we talk about the STEM related kind of uh jobs in future that they can do, okay? So uh but then having having said that, like what was mentioned, this question is, I think. We don't want to force the children to extend that is at the com- that we compromise their well-being. The well-being of the child is definitely the most important thing that we have uh at a backup of minds. That we want to make sure that when we make those decisions, eh that we make it with in consultation with the parents and the child's well-being is being looked after. Okay, Ken, so I hope that answers your question. Are there other questions as well from parents? Okay, we will practice some with time, we will let parents also just see if you all have, you're thinking of any questions to raise them. Maybe in the meantime, I can also, I would like to just share a screen and show you something. Parents, just give me a minute. Okay. Now, let me just give you an example, you have heard me and as well as Madame Isa uh speak quite a bit about. Uh you know, us having that belief in the children, and I wanted to assure all parents that it is not just stuff and principle. In the school trying to sell this to to parents, and I really mean it, and I think when I saw this reflection from a graduate. I think this was shared to to the teachers and myself, by one of our teachers. One of our P six, ex P six students who have graduated, actually shared this reflection with uh the teachers. And I was very touched by this, and I was actually struck caught with me. This is very important because thi- this is what the child said, I found math simple in P one. Things went a bit downhill from P two onwards, by the time I was in P three, I never did my math homework. I lost all confidence in math in P four, and I did not believe in myself. I made a horrible choice of giving up. However, when I was in P five, I was given a great bear, so great is our school's values. I told myself that I not reached my limit, a question in P six on fractions, which I was unable to do. To understand to then changed my feelings about math. Uh so I think what she meant here was that, uh she, you know, it changed her feelings about math when she was taught how to do this question in P six on fractions. Being able to do that question motivated me to keep going, math is much easier and I can understand it better. So on the graph that she drew on the right-hand side, I thought it was very nice that she drew this chart to show where she is at that point in time when she was at P six. And probably even past P six. I think this is a very good example of one of our students, and it can very well be your child. Uh and it can happen to this child, I'm very, very sure it can happen to any child that. As long as they have the right attitude, the right motivation, with the support from the teachers, that kind of belief. We can help the children to actually change their mindsets when it comes to mathematics or whatever subjects for them. And that also means how important it is that for us, we don't write off our children too early on. We give them the kind of support, and we 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 hope, we we have that kind of strong beliefs that we have them all the way until the end as far as we can, okay? So I just wanted to share this uh story with with all parents. Think we have another question? All right, what is the disadvantage of taking foundation and when going to secondary school? Um maybe if I could say that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't exactly use the word disadvantage, because the thing is that ultimately. Okay, in the first place, when we make that decision together with the parents about uh changing our children's subject from standard to foundation. Is done with the aim in mind to say that, so that the child can be able to assess that curriculum at P six level better. I think it's a better fit for the child, rather than having to struggle very badly at a standard curriculum. And the risk of the child getting A L eight, because just now it was earlier mentioned, A L eight is considered as being so-called failing the subject at P S L E. Right? Because I think ultimately, when we look at all our data, we we make that decision, right? At the end of P five or maybe first three months after P six. And we say that we want to change the child over to foundation, because we have already seen based on the data and the trend. That it's very unlikely that the child can actually uh get A L seven or better for that subject. And hence, we will then advise that the child takes uh foundation, so that when they go through the foundation curriculum. The likelihood of the child being able, as long as the child works hard, being able to get A L A, B or C, not C, sorry, A L A or B. Is there, A L B, A L A and A L B would translate to an A L six and A L seven. Okay, on the standard scale, so let me repeat that, if it's A L A or A L B. Then it will translate to A L six or A L seven on the standard scale, that means that the child has passed the subject, all right? Now, if you are talking about in terms of the matching to secondary school, the so-called disadvantage is then that. A child who does the foundation curriculum is less likely to be able to assess the the what we call now the G two. Curriculum at the secondary level so well, G two curriculum is somewhat equivalent to the N A curriculum. Because the foundation subjects are better packed at the uh previously is the normal technical subjects, okay? Normal technical subjects, but of course, I wanted to then uh try trying to help parents to understand that our system has moved so much. That now, just now what was mentioned about full subject-based spending at a secondary level and the removal of streaming. Means that actually the su- the students will not be going into the secondary school branded as a N T student, N E student or express student. They are actually doing their subject at the secondary level, either as G one, G two or G three. Okay, and I think that this is much better for the motivation of the child. If I'm doing foundation for a particular subject, I have a A L seven, then I will do a a subject at G one level. In the secondary school, but maybe my English is stronger, so I am doing standard English. I got an A L, let's say I A L uh six, and so then I will be able to do the G two. Subject for English at the secondary level. So now, what happens is that the child who is at a secondary level will be given a basket of subjects. So now what happens is that the child who is at a secondary level will be given a basket of subjects that are at different levels. Based on their ability at that point in time, their readiness. So I I hope parents can see the beauty of the system moving forward, because I think it's no longer that very sweeping express N A and T. But they actually do the subjects based on their competency in that subject, their ability in a subject at a point in time, okay? Okay. I have a son who said for P S R E last year was advised to take standard math from P five onwards, but changed later to foundation math, okay? But he has been scoring his math below twenty marks since primary one, if I can turn back the time, I'll definitely allow my my son to take foundation math at a earlier stage. Because throughout the years, I find that's not benefit uh the child. If my son had changed to foundation math earlier, he would have scored better results for his P S R E last year at foundation level. Um, so for this parent, maybe I would like to recommend that feel free to get in touch with the teachers again. Different children, I think different trajectory, again, the thing is that, I think for the child at this stage. My own guess is that maybe for your child, could he have been hovering around at that at that gray area? Where we can make the decision so clearly at that point in time. Uh, so may I me just explain again that indeed, I think it is possible that if let's say your child could have done better in foundation math and got an A L A. Okay, A L A actually then packs to A L six on the standard scale. But let me explain the 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 slight disadvantage of this. A child who does a foundation curriculum at a primary level. Will find it very difficult to bridge the gap between the standard, uh between the foundation curriculum at a primary level. And then when going on to secondary to do the N A equivalent of the math syllabus, the gap is quite big. Because the children who are doing foundation math at primary level, the packing is actually closer towards N T math in secondary when they go on to second one. I have seen children for myself who have done foundation early on, got an A L A, so packed to A L six. So they chose the N A math at a secondary level and they really struggled, because there are a lot of things that they didn't learn. In primary school that they had to learn from scratch at the secondary level. Um, so personally, I have been actually a secondary school teacher in the past, I taught science. And during that time when I was teaching science as a H O D science in my previous, one of my previous schools, that was the exactly the same issue that I faced. Because then I saw primary school students coming into secondary school, children who actually got. Uh, good enough grades to be able to assess the N A curriculum for science, and it was a struggle to bridge the children over, it that their confidence really suffered. Their confidence really suffered, I must really say that, so but again, I I acknowledge your concerns, uh could it be a case whereby the child who have done better, let's say more time was given. To do the foundation uh math early, early on, but I think to bearing in mind that the child would not have had the standard math exposure. And he will have been just exposed to foundation math for an entire year through, then going on into secondary school, that option is no longer there, okay? Okay, question, alright, not sure if I missed this and I'm not up to date with the education system in secondary now. If the students take foundation or standard subjects in P five and P six, do these affect the subjects they take in secondary school? Are there also different levels of subjects in secondary school? Yes, yes, indeed, uh so thanks for asking this question. So it is not too early for our P four parents to uh find out more about what is happening at the secondary landscape. Uh, it's a good question you asked, our secondary landscape has indeed changed quite a bit. When uh for our P six parents this year, I had a talk with the P six parents as well, explained a little bit about the secondary school system, what was happening. Uh, I won't, we won't have a time now for me to mention the entire thing about secondary school landscape, but maybe let's do it this way. One is, I would like to suggest to parents, that it's not too early for you to find out from the uh M O E website about our secondary school landscape. You can Google full subject based spending secondary school, and it will show you everything about F S B B at a secondary school level. And what you need to know about secondary school level, so indeed, there is no longer this express normal acca- normal technical streams anymore. Our children will go into the secondary school based on their P S R E results. Uh, when it comes to the posting to secondary schools at the end of P six after the P S L E. They will be posted in using posting groups, we call it posting groups, okay, so the way of posting groups is somewhat similar to today's. Uh, posting via the streets, but not to worry, that's the only time that they will have this posting group. The moment they get into the school of their choice, because they will have six choices. They can choose from and then let's say they get posted into that the the school of the choice because the frequency there allows for it and the scores match the school. Then there is when they will be offered the subject based on how well they did at P S L E. So like I mentioned just now, if let's say your child actually got, uh let's say a total of about twenty two points. Alright, twenty A L twenty two points, I think currently twenty two points will have qualified your your child for the N A stream. In the past is the N E stream, then moving forward, it's posting group two, alright, so N E stream posting group two. Means that actually most of the subjects will be roughly at the G two level. But if you have some subjects that a child did well, let's say English, you've got A L three or A L two, that's very, very good. Then the child will be offered G three, that is a higher subject, higher level in the school. So that he doesn't have to do G two for all the subjects, he doesn't have to do the N A for all the subjects, he will do the express equivalent for the English. And then the other subjects will be according to how the how the uh child has scored, okay? So that is to explain what is happening at the secondary landscape now, but I would like to encourage our parents to find out a little bit more from the school website, uh from the M O E website. Is it manageable for a child to move from foundation level to standard level? Really depends on how long the child has been doing the foundation subject. Um, and generally, if we say that the child has been doing the foundation foundation subject for a few months, unfortunately, I would say it's not easy. It's not easy because it will be that couple of months, that one month whereby the 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 subject that the child was actually doing at. That um that they won't be able to catch up from there. So that's why the recommendation from the onset, from the start is we will say, start with the standard first, don't be too quick to give the foundation. Right, we will see how the child goes, we also want to actually encourage our children, right, in life is indeed like that, they will have a lot of obstacles. But how do we actually encourage our children to try and put in that hard work, to try and overcome those obstacles? Uh, don't, I mean, we don't want our children to be to be totally unmotivated about it and then lose all the confidence, right? But then at the same time, we don't, we don't want them to actually use the easy way out, to then immediately go to the foundation level, that's why right from onset. We have always recommended the standard subject for almost all of our children, just a few of them. On the discussion between the parents and the and the and the teachers, teachers are also aware, evaluation of the child. Maybe some of our children also do have certain special needs as well, right, in the subjects that they are very, very weak in. And hence the recommendation could be that I think foundation may be a better choice for the child, okay? I hope I have managed to answer all our questions, just as the time is also five P M. Uh, very big thank you to all the parents, if you have further queries, I would like to encourage you all, don't don't hesitate to actually contact the school, check in with the school and that. And also check in with the teachers because the teachers know your children well, okay, thank you so much, parents, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, parents, that will be the end of today's session, right, thank you for joining us once again, thank you.